To open this evening's meeting for the Middleton Select Board on Tuesday, June 3rd, 2025. Just to remind everyone, this meeting is being recorded, televised live and then also being audio and video recorded so you can watch it later. The first item is a moment to make Middleton proud. We want to take this moment to make recognition of the Masconomic Class of 2025 valedictorian, Massimo Massimattei. Real quickly, a few things of note here. As we near the end of the graduation and commencement ceremony season, we acknowledge all those students who have made it to the next step of their academic careers and for high school seniors, the next phase of their lives. So before the celebrations are over for this school year, the Select Board felt there was one more congratulatory statement to be given. So today, on behalf of the town of Middleton, we're proud to recognize one of its own and this year's Masconomic Class of 2025's valedictorian, Massimo Massimattei. Massimo is with us today in company of his proud parents, Marco Catalina, and his super proud grandparents, Antonio and Estorina. Pleasure to have you. As well as I see now that I don't have listed additional family and friends, so welcome. Born and raised in Middleton, Massimo is a product of the Middleton Elementary School System. He graduates with high honors, a member of the National Honor Society, received the Mass Seal of Bileiteracy, and was awarded the Middleton Everett W. Marion E. Mitchell Foundation Scholarship. The Board would like to thank all the teachers in our tri-town school system, to thank all these teachers in our Masconoma and Junior High Schools. And with us today, I want to make sure we mention our Masco Superintendent Mike Harvey and Masco Principal Katie DiNardo. Thank you, thank you for coming. I don't know if the Board wanted to congratulate him at all, or... This is, this is really good. So what I would like to do at this point is read this proclamation we have for you, Massimo. Whereas the town of Middleton is seeking to acknowledge the passion, dedication, and hard work of Massimo Massimattei. In recognition of his academic achievements as valedictorian of the Masconomic Regional High School Class of 2025, we, the members of the Select Board, do hereby order that our congratulations and acknowledgement be extended and further order in direct, while duly assembled in session at the Select Board's meeting in Middleton, under the charter and ordinances of the town of Middleton, that this official expression of pride be sent forth with, on behalf of the Select Board and the citizens of the town of Middleton, this third day of January, June 2000... June 2025, so. That's good, yep. They'll be moving me on soon.
Congratulations.
Hey, congratulations. Good job.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Job well done.
I'd love to say thank you so much to Chairman Cassiodas, the Select Board in Town of Middleton. This means so much to me because I've spent my whole life here. Like you said, I'm a product of Full and Meadow and How Manning. So it's a beautiful thing to see our local government in action. I hope to one day start my own family here in Middleton. So I'm counting on you guys. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Where are you off to? What's next?
I'm going to Northeastern next year for computer science.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does a lot. And your, your speech was inspiring to say the least.
That means a lot. Thank you so much.
Right? Make sure you do it, you owe it to, you don't just owe it to yourself.
That's right.
You owe it to the person you want to be.
That's right.
I thought that was awesome.
I believe in that, of course.
Very good.
Thank you.
All the best, my friend.
Thank you guys so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. All right. So with that, now we'll take this moment to do our annual Board Reorganization where we're going to elect a new chairperson and elect a new clerk.
I'd like to nominate Deb for chairperson.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Deb, do you accept?
No, I do not. At this time with my current job role, the chairperson has to put in a little more work than I know I can give at the 110%. I am going to recommend and nominate Brian Cresta as chair.
Thank you, Deb.
And Brian?
Do you accept?
Do you accept?
If nominated, I will accept.
Perfect.
So we have a nomination.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination in a second, so all those in favor of Mr. Cresta becoming the chair for this next year? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Very good? Then ceremoniously or unceremoniously, change positions. Thank you, Costa.
It's been a hell of a year. Good luck, Brian.
Oh, yeah. I'll leave the same computer. I didn't know if that one would show us about it. Well, first off, thank you very much for the trust and honor of electing me as chairperson. I think this is my third, maybe fourth time serving as chair. I'll say the same thing that I've said to other board members in the past and other committees I've served on. I may be the chair of the board, but this is our board. We work collaboratively. A couple of ground rules I'd like to lay out. First off, as you know, we have a process of developing our agenda. I will tell every single board member here, if there's something you'd like to see on our agenda, please let me know before, I would say, the Tuesday before our next upcoming meeting, if not Wednesday at the latest, and I will ensure that it's on that agenda. If for some reason that agenda is very full, we will move it to the following meeting. Secondly, I know everybody has other things going on in their lives, personal lives, professional lives, and we will lay out a calendar for the rest of the year. I will let you all know if there are certain times that, you know, that doesn't work for you, if you have to be out of town, or there's other family or professional commitments, please let me know. We can always move our meetings if we have advance notice. I am very amenable to that because, again, we all have other personal and professional lives. Lastly, I'd like to, at some point in the not-too-distant future, talk to this board to work about some items of focus and priorities that this board would like to see for the coming year. In addition to that, I'd like to have more open discussion about the, and this is weird to say because we just finished town meeting and the new fiscal year hasn't started, but the planning for the following fiscal year, I'd like to see some changes to timelines and process for our upcoming FY '27.
Seven.
Budget process. And I think, given the difficulty in the budget process that we just finished, it's a very good and smart idea to look at our process on that. That will be coming in the future, but in the meantime, please let me know if there's things you'd like to see on the agenda, things that you'd like to see in our work plan for the coming year. Lastly, we will be entering, coming in July and August, our summer schedule, and before this meeting closes, let's work to make sure that the dates that we pick for that abbreviated schedule during those months work for everybody's calendar this year. So...
You do have the clerk?
Yes. So at this point, I would state that it's now time to reorganize, to elect a clerk, and I would ask if this board would be interested in seeing Debbie being nominated and elected as clerk? Is that a position you'd be interested in?
Yes, I would accept.
So I'll make that nomination.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor to nominate Debbie Carbonia as clerk. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there is a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, if any? I do not hear any. Okay. I'm going to ask for number three on the agenda to be postponed until the town administrator returns. He had to step out for a moment and will return. Same thing with item number four. So if possible, I'd like to move to item five, which is a department head update. This evening, we have with us our fire chief, Chief Doug LaColst. Chief, the floor is yours. I'd like to first start off, and I probably should have started the meeting. This is our first formal meeting since we've held... Yeah, please, chief. Since we've had town meeting and town election. So first off, a big thank you to the voters in town. A big congratulations to two members of this board that are, have returned to the committee, both Rick and Debbie. Congratulations on, I think, very well-run and focused campaign. I'm glad the voters rewarded you and rewarded this board with your return to your public service. Secondly, a big thank you to the taxpayers and voters in this town that approved multiple overrides, not lost on anybody in this board, the cost and the sacrifice doing so, and a big thank you to our police and fire chiefs who really led the charge of showcasing for the voters to understand what that override meant for police and fire. So I think it's pretty timely to be here with you tonight, chief.
We should also thank all the candidates who chose, you know, to run in, you know, in the town election. You know, it takes, you know, time and effort and a certain level of interest in the town's business, you know, to undertake that, so, you know, thank you to everyone that ran.
And usually at this point, we have a meeting either right after or immediately after the election. Usually this is when Costa reminds everybody, please go out and pick up your lawn signs. It took a little while this election for them all to be picked up, but even without you reminding of Costa, so. But chief, thank you. I, I know that we have a couple of items on the agenda in addition to your update that we will get to, both the, the previous fire department vote and potential mutual aid donation there, a little bit about the new ambulance carrier at Middleton Jail, and then lastly, I think Justin should be back by then, some discussion around the Lake Street Fire Department Structural Engineer Proposal and some follow-up from our previous meetings as we've talked about what to do with your old headquarters as you move into your new headquarters. But floor is yours, chief.
Okay, thank you, everybody. And, you know, to echo your sentiments, I'd like to, you know, thank the residents of the community for the continued ongoing support. You know, the recent approval of the, for full-time firefighters, I know it's going to go a long way to, to help us and our staffing needs. As far as some brief updates, so I have some statistics that I'm not going to bore you with, but, you know, I can just tell you that the numbers are pretty consistent as to what they were last year as far as staffing, breakdowns, emergency calls, pretty consistent throughout, mutual aid calls, EMS calls versus fire calls. I can tell you that our EMS calls are about 54% of our total call volume. As far as new hires, so obviously, once the positions were approved, we, the next day, we posted the positions and we currently have the open application process. It's going to be open until the 15th or 16th of June, and then once that, that closes, we will begin the, the process of conducting interviews and finding four good candidates for the position of full-time firefighters. As far as part-time staffing, I do have one part-time member that's going to be attending the part-time academy starting next week. That's out in Stowe, Mass. That'll be a couple nights a week and all-day Saturdays. As far as vehicle updates, so if you recall, we ordered a new fire engine roughly two and a half plus years ago. Unfortunately, that engine is still not ready. It's probably not going to be ready till fourth quarter of this year.
Disco first quarter, fourth quarter or calendar fourth?
Calendar fourth quarter. So that engine, we paid $750,000 for, I believe. That same engine today would be well over $1 million, $1.1, $1.2 million. So that is somewhat concerning, but, you know, hopefully we get that truck relatively soon. As far as the new ambulance, there's still no update with that, but I know when we signed that contract, it was going to be at least two years plus for that ambulance to be delivered. As far as our ladder truck that was recently approved, we're still in the process of looking at various vendors and, you know, checking out vehicles to see what would work best for us, so we'll continue to, to look at the different companies out there and we'll reform the committee and we'll determine what's, what'll work best for the town and hopefully move forward relatively soon.
Well, there'll be a similar long wait to get that one set up?
I would say probably about three years, give or take, unfortunately, but that is what it is, I guess. So as far as public education, so we continue with the Retire the Fire campaign. That has been very successful. Like I had mentioned a while back, that a majority of our homes that we go into, we find that they're either missing or no carbon monoxide detectors, so that program continues to work well. We've recently had some CPR training classes here at Full and Meadow, which were well-attended, and we'll have some more of those as well. We have a great partnership with Council on Aging. We continuously go in and do routine public speaking opportunities and, you know, meet with the elderly and talk to them about different safety topics and so forth, and been well-received, and we look forward to, you know, continuing that throughout the year. As far as some upcoming events, so we're scheduled to have an open house this Saturday, weather permitting, at the fire station. We'll see if Mother Nature cooperates, but...
Hasn't cooperated the last 12 weeks.
Yeah, it's not looking too promising, but we'll, that'll probably be game time decision. And then Firefighter Sunday is this Sunday at 9:00. Opportunity to remember the deceased firefighters. That'll be up at the Oakdale Cemetery at 9:00 AM, follow Vicodin Light Refreshments back at the fire station. I think that's about it. And we'll get into the jail.
Chief, prior to that, when, given that approval has been given for the hiring of the new firefighters, including that, the likelihood is some, if not all, of these new firefighters will have to go through the academy. I mean, you may be able to find a firefighter from a paramedic, firefighter, paramedic from another town are already through the academy. When do you think is a reasonable timeframe of when you'd be able to see these positions filled? Not holding you to it, I'm just...
Yeah, so I mean, it would depend on if they come academy trained. You know, obviously, they have to go through the medical process, you know, background checks and so forth, so I'm not going to be aggressive, but I would say prob... I mean, I'm hoping if they come academy trained, I'm hoping maybe August first-ish. I mean, if they have to go to the academy, then that depends on the availability of slots there, so that's a 10-week program, so if that's the case, I mean, I'll try to get them in as soon as possible if they need to go to the academy.
Do we have the ability to kind of grab an academy slot before we actually...
No, I have to have, uh...
Actually, I have to have the... And I'm assuming it's probably more difficult to find somebody that actually has a paramedic certification already.
Yeah, I mean, finding somebody that's going to be academy trained and paramedic trained...
Is that a unicorn?
Um, it's, it'll be a challenge. Never say never, but, you know, we'll see what happens. We'll plug away and see, see who we can get.
So applicants who aren't already firefighters perhaps might be paramedic or something somewhere.
That is a possibility. Yeah, and then we'd send them right to the academy and that...
If, I'm just saying. Two things real quick. The, the fire truck, it's expensive. Can you just mention again how, you know, the type of longevity you're looking for? You know, how long a service do we get, generally get from, you know, that kind of vehicle?
So, I mean, the current ladder truck is close to 30 years old.
30 years.
I can tell you that NFPA guidelines state that 15, after 15 years, the truck should be rotated to reserve status, and then after 20, 25 years should be retired, you know, but it all depends on wear and tear and call volume and so forth. I mean, I can tell you that our ambulances, our backup ambulance has 94,000 miles on it. Our primary ambulance has, I want to say, close to 70,000 miles on it, which was just unheard of, keeping a vehicle with that many miles. It just goes to show that it's just, you know, on the go, just going back and forth to the hospital, so.
And the pumper that's being replaced when this new one, hopefully at the end of the calendar year, is ready, that's a pumper from what, like 99?
That would be, so that's engine one, that would be a 2001, I believe.
And what happens to that?
So that will be either traded in or sold out, right?
Just some people are hearing that, that they're big numbers, but you get, you know, it's more than the family car, you know? You're going to have it longer than the family car, because I think a lot of people are just thinking in terms of motor vehicle. I'm going to laugh at you, but we're talking a long time.
And for the edification of those at home, I know you mentioned, you know, the new vehicle that is coming at the end of this year. When we ordered it, it was about $750,000. Now it's north of a million. Just so we're clear, the $750,000 price tag still stands for us.
Correct. Yes. And, and on the fee, I guess, are you anticipating any change with the jail on the fees ambulance-wise? Because I'm happy to see that they're really not that far off from the town.
Yeah, I think that's number two on the agenda here for the fire.
Right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, 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 it's just, there's a new carrier over there. We'll talk a little bit about that, but...
Yeah, so WellPath, which is Health Cost Solutions, they filed for bankruptcy. So a person from Vital Core Health Strategies reached out, looking to sign a, an agreement with the town.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
That company that filed bankruptcy, are we going to lose any money that they would owe us?
So there are still some outstanding funds that are due. I know that Sarah and Nick have been working behind the scenes to go through the process to claim, you know, jump through the hoops to claim those funds, but I don't know where that stands.
If we can find out from Sarah for the next...
Yeah, so I'd ask on that, is, is there any risk of exposure? I don't know if they're Chapter 9, Chapter 7, Chapter 13, I don't know what they're filing. I mean, if they're closing the doors and walking away or if they're reorganizing, is there exposure of uncollected that we just may not be able to collect?
So we're working on the assumption that we're not going to be able to collect any of it, starting from there, but we're going to work really aggressively to try to recapture as much of that as we can.
So this isn't the XYZ company that they were contracted for? This is the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that they were contracted for. I know it's the Sheriff's Department, but that budget is controlled and managed by the Executive Office of Administration and Finance. So I know there's been issues in the past, no fault of our own, that there's been uncollectibles down there, mainly folks that are visiting the jail that your department staff has arrived to, but if we're providing services for actually individuals that are incarcerated there in the care and custody of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and a vendor that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has determined to utilize doesn't make the payment, I got to tell you, the Commonwealth's going to be making us, or the Sheriff Department, or some combination thereof has to make do on that. My question is, what if we don't enter an agreement with this new carrier at the jail until we get confirmation on that? What does that mean?
I support that.
Yeah, good point. Well, does that give them the...
Chief, do you know what consequence that may or may not bring?
Go ahead, Costa.
I mean, there's, to me, there's, I know there was discussions a while back about us not responding to the jail for, for medical calls, and I can tell you the research that I did, it showed that we are obligated to.
And I get that, and I understand that completely, but I'm saying, do we have to accept a rate?
A contract.
So in, in, in the, in the world of health insurance, if you don't accept a rate, you don't accept a, a network rate, you either do a single-case agreement, which the jail has to say, okay, this is what we're going to pay you for this case, or there is some type of temporary rate structure that is put in place. There is usually some type of basis. It's a percentage of Medicare, it's a percentage of commercial rates, or some combination thereof. I guess, I don't want to rush to sign something if we are, and I don't know, it might be $1,000 that we're due, it may be $100,000 that we're due from the carrier that went belly up. The way I view it, it's not the, the former carrier or the former provider of the services at the jail, it's the sheriff's department's individuals that are in his custody and the care and custody of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I, I would argue the same thing. If we, if we had a subcontractor that we hired to do work on behalf of the, doing something here in the Commonwealth, for the town of Middleton, and that subcontractor just went belly up and didn't deliver the service, I mean, we wouldn't say to the townspeople, oop, sorry.
No, I'm in agreement there, and chief, my, the best of my recollection, I think it was about 30K.
32,000 dollars.
Yeah, so it's, you know, not a small amount of money, but not a very large amount of money either in the scheme of things, and I definitely, I see the points you're connecting, and I agree with them, and I think we can pursue that point. In terms of the new rate, there is one element that, and my apologies for walking in late, by the way, but, and I don't know if you already covered it, chief, but they had effectively assigned us a new rate, and after discussing with Sarah and I, chief took it, took the initiative to propose a higher rate that they have accepted, and so there is some good in some way that's going to come out of that. I don't know if you want to get into that, chief.
Can we back up just a second? So would you say, for people watching and for everybody, we're obligated to serve the jail? Can you explain, give a little explanation of why?
So basically, they're on the borders of Middleton, so we have, we have an obligation to provide medical services for anybody within the community. So whether it's a jail or shopping center, doctor's office, you know, we can't just...
Pressing home, whatever the case is.
You know, we have a service home plan, which is a document that's approved by the state, which basically dictates our response times, which dictates our backup agreements, the area that we serve, so, you know, basically, we can't pick and choose who we want to respond to. So they're in Middleton, and we provide an ambulance service for the town of Middleton. We're obligated to.
Okay. That would be an OEMS requirement, I assume?
Um, yeah, I've got a DPH or...
Which is not a DPH.
Yeah, yeah.
When was the date that the old provider stopped?
So, and the new one starts. So they're slated to take over July 1st.
Right. So what, what is happening with services that are being provided now? Who's responsible for them?
I would assume it's still WellPath. Are we getting paid for those services?
So it's my understanding we are. It's, it was a certain date prior that Sarah and Nick were looking to recruit.
Once, once you go into bankruptcy, it's talking about trying to get off what you owe, but if you're continuing doing business, you got to pay your current bills, so. So what would happen? Let's say there was an inmate up there that was maybe in there for two or three days, and something happened in the two or three days, and he had Blue Cross.
No, no, under, under Massachusetts law, once you're incarcerated, whether it's in a jail or a prison, depending if it's short-term, long-term, no insurance, no private insurance works inside, actually, no Medicaid works inside. There are a lot of states now that are filing 1115 waivers to actually bring Medicaid coverage in for the last 30 to 60 days of an individual's incarceration for transition purposes, but once you are in the care and custody of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is overseeing your care and custody, including all medical services, food services, protection, safety, et cetera, et cetera. So insurance does not, it's, it's not now. If an individual was visiting somebody there and they needed services, their insurance would cover. If they didn't have insurance...
So what happens to this person? So this is just transportation. Once they get there, if they need a major operation, who pays for that?
Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
On the inmate? On the, on the, on the civilian in the lobby? Where business is done as soon as these guys clear the...
So the proposed rates with the new carrier, higher than the rates from the old carrier?
Yes. So they typically pay 100% of the Medicare rates, which, for instance, the current Medicare fee schedule for BLS emergency, for instance, is $467.14. After having multiple discussions with Justin and Sarah and so forth, we proposed a 20% increase on that rate.
So 120% of Medicare?
So, yeah, so $560.57 for BLS emergency, and they have agreed to that. So I have BLS emergency, ALS 1, ALS 2, and then mileage, 5% above those rates.
So to, to give you an idea of what 120% of Medicare is, about 175 to 180% of Medicare is, you're now talking to... is, you're now talking commercial insurance rates. We're talking Medicaid rates, we'd be losing our shirts. But that is not, 120% of Medicare is not an uncommon figure. Quite honestly, I mean, coming from a Medicare and Medicaid plan, um, and I worked for the two largest, uh, more often than not, they were paying at least 120 to 140% of Medicare, for Medicare members. Now, obviously, the individuals in a jail, even if they're Medicare eligible, they're not covered by Medicare, but they're using the Medicare rate structure as the, as the model for this. So, it's not, that's not, I'm actually not upset at 120% of Medicare, I think that was a good job. I'd also like to ask in this contract, what is the timeline for repayment, and what is the timeline for, um, uh, claims that are being rejected in terms of, uh, redetermination of those claims? Cause that's where you can get hung up in a cycle of 30 days becomes 45, becomes 60, becomes 90, and now, you know, we're chasing dollars. And secondly, um, when a claim, they're saying, well, they're not really eligible for that, we're saying they are, because we actually provided that service, um, and they're not agreeing to pay, what is the process for? And there should be some language, stock language in there, and I'd recommend we kinda take a look at this as well. I mean, I, I'll take every opportunity of a problem to turn it into a benefit on our behalf, and, and, but lastly, back to the uncollectibles, um, I truly hope the sheriff's response to this isn't, well, they went bankrupt, um, because these are services we provided for the sheriff. Um, and if it's $30,000, $50,000, I hope he's gonna be magnanimous enough to actually keep the town whole that is providing 100% of the services to his jail.
So based on that feedback, I think we'll go ahead and table this, we'll follow up on those few items, and bring it back, uh, your meeting on the 24th.
What would be a reason they would refuse it? If you transported someone, sent the bill in, what would be a reason that they would kick it back and say it's, it's not eligible to be paid?
I mean, honestly, I think that one of the biggest pickups is if the name is spelled incorrectly, or if they have an MSA number, like an identification number, if that number's off, um, I would say, I can't really think of any.
And that's what our, that's what our third party payer that does our claims for us manages. I mean, many times, claim rejections are because there's an error, it's not a clean claim that's submitted. Sometimes it's, well, you said you provided A, B, and C in addition to the transport, we think it was only A and B. Um, that'll be a give and take back and forth. I expect, you're right, I expect most of the errors are, or most of the claim errors are incorrect name, incorrect date, you know, we're going by what we submit, they're going by what they're gonna pay back to us. Um, and that, for us, is a cash flow issue. I mean, I would assume this is probably our number one payer. Close?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, do, you arrive at Mrs. Smith's house, there might be a claim issue with Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's one claim. Um, I'd just like to see what the SLAs are in the contract, in terms of the requirements of, you know, when they pay, how they pay, when claims are disputed, or there's an error in a claim. And sometimes errors will happen on our behalf, I get that, that happens, claim errors happen all the time.
And how long would the agreement be for?
Just looking through there, I didn't see.
And will they count to this?
No, this is what they agree to.
Oh, okay.
Cause I didn't read that in their letter.
Right, but, you know, the point is, you know, are we agreeing to this for one year, three years, five years? And, you know, while, if it's stated as 120% of the Medicare rate, what happens if the Medicare rate is cut?
So Medicare rate almost never goes down. Um, what?
Almost, but we're in the new environment.
No, we are in a new environment, but I will tell you, Medicare rate almost never goes down. I would much rather have, and I, I haven't seen this in the language, I would much rather have it state 120% of Medicare than an actual dollar amount. Um, because when rate increases happen, I mean, this administration has already announced Medicare rates for providers, what they're looking like in the next fiscal year, and they're going up. Uh, they're actually going up about 50% higher than they were going up with the previous administration has announced. Now, Medicaid, they're slashing the hell out of that. Medicare, they're actually doing something different. Um, and if they do cut Medicare rates, there'll be people in the streets with burning pitchforks. So, um, I'd wanna be careful what our rate book says. Is it 120% of the Medicare rate, and here's the Medicare rate as of this date, or is it a dollar amount?
Maybe a floor of what it starts at. This company that's handling this, is, what else do they handle? Are they only handling the town of Middleton, Ambos runs for the jail, or are they, are they taking over a whole bunch of stuff for the jail that has nothing to do with us?
I would have to assume it's a portfolio.
It's all, as I understand, what they do is all health services, including the staff that's in there, or actually employees of the organization.
Well, it was, to my recollection, yeah.
So, so if the other companies in bankruptcy, why wouldn't the jail wanna rush and get them in place like tomorrow? What is the wait till July 1st? If, I mean, I, I would like to vote and approve this right now, and see if we could say, if you want us to continue serving the jail, we, we want this company tomorrow morning, that solvent, rather than have another 29 days.
I think it's probably because of the new carrier can't start until July 1st. They're probably not gonna step in until, what is, now, the staff there is probably gonna transfer over from company A to company B.
Transition period.
Yeah, and that's a common occurrence. When, think of this as a Medicaid plan or a Medicare plan, when they lose a contract and a new company comes in, um, there's a, there's a transition plan, and, and, and it happens more often than not, there's a, there's a very large Medicaid plan right now that's in bankruptcy. They're gonna be exiting the market in several states, a new plan's coming in to take, a perfect example is Commonwealth Care Alliance in Massachusetts, they were going belly up. Um, Molina just purchased them, um, Molina's taking over actually as of July 1st, um, and from that point up until July 1st, CCA is operating. It's a very common occurrence.
I, I think we should vote on this tonight and approve it and get them in as quick as we, anything that we do to delay having a solvent company reimbursing us from a bankrupt company, I'd wanna do everything we can to make that happen. So I, I personally would like to.
They don't start until July 1st, even if we approve this, they're not on site and, and operational until July 1st.
I would rather table it until we know exactly what we're signing.
And in the meantime, the inmates that are being brought by Middleton Fire, they're ju, they're just billing the state, or that's gonna be part of whoever the new company's, you know, they're gonna have them pay for it.
Because if I understand it correctly, the reason to table this isn't because we have an issue with this contract with them, it's because we wanna find out what's going on with the other company, which they have nothing to do with.
Partly true, but there are some elements, like term of the agreement, that I do wanna send background and double check, but I appreciate it.
And given what, you know, Brian said that you see somewhere between 120 and 140% of the Medicare rate, can we, okay, we'll start at 120, but if, you know, over a five year agreement, you know, year one is 120, year two is 125%, year three, you know, and get it up to the 140. I mean, is that a possibility?
You can always ask.
Not an uncommon, in a, I mean, I've negotiated a lot of these, it's not uncommon in a provider rate agreement to actually have a stair step to the rate that you really wanna be at, but also realizing it may not be possible within a current budget structure of whomever the organization is. So, um, I, I wouldn't disagree with that argument, maybe it's 120, 125, 130, over several year period. Um, and again, really like to see the SLAs in terms of time for pay, and, and what is the process when a, um, when a rate is rejected? Many times, some of the processes, we, we're gonna pay it, and then we may claw back. Um, sometimes the process is, we're just not gonna pay this until it's resolved. And we may get some line of sight to that from our billing company of how they manage it as well.
I have one, sorry. This letter that I'm holding now, May 22nd, to Lindbrook, this says, this was our proposal. Am I missing a step? Was this a counterproposal?
So between the time you received the packet and tonight, they had come back to a counterproposal from Chief for an additional 20%?
And that's what I'm holding now. This proposal.
That's the updated.
Like, those numbers to the right were the last rate, okay.
That was the 100% of Medicare, this is not the 120, correct?
Correct, cause the hundreds weren't even got agreed to over the weekend or something.
I was just missing, didn't see a step there.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, then the other item was.
The mutual aid.
Mutual aid vote.
Yes, so we have our old boat, that, um, we replaced that boat, and, um, we're looking to borrow it or.
What's the value of the boat?
About the value of the boat, the trailer motor was roughly 3,000.
All right. Being favored, this ties with it if that's not appropriate.
The easiest thing, you know, if, you know, we give it to a neighboring community that has helped us in the past, then we can help them, and then, you know, why do a 10 year loan?
Correct.
Yeah, just give it to Mike. So I'd say if that's the case, if the board, um, could authorize me to sign an agreement, we'll draft up the copy, um, the second copy that I had sent along from legal counsel, and we'll send it off.
So I'd entertain such a motion?
Uh, so moved, sorry.
Okay, there's a motion from Rick, and Debbie, you had a second?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second for the town administrator to develop an agreement with.
Lindfield.
Town of Lindfield, and we are going to be providing the surplus, um, fire department rescue boat with trailer and engine, um, to the town of Lindfield, um, as well as, um, providing our thanks to them for their past support in multiple mutual aid, including the most recent forest fires. Okay, so there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Okay, that passes unanimous, thank you. And then, um, Justin, the Lake Street Fire Department Structural Engineer Proposal. So if you could, uh, just update for those at home, um, where we are in that, I know that, um, a previous meeting, we discussed a potential disposition of that property, once, um, the chief and his men and women depart that building. Um, and part of our discussion was looking at, what is the structural capacity of that building, the foundation, um, the floor, if a portion of that building, at least the retaining wall areas could remain, or anything else to support parking and green space there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, a few elements there that you touched upon, the largest takeaway being, out of all the different iterations of what could happen to the existing fire station on Lake Street, um, what's actually possible from an engineering perspective, that's what we're trying to figure out through this study. And so there is a proposal from Socotac, um, Wayne Lawson, who's one of their main engineers there, met with the chief and I, and thank you, Chief, for walking Wayne through the building, uh, looked at it top to bottom, pointed out different, um, elements and complicating factors. All in all, they think they can do the study over the course of two months, um, just for a site investigation and feasibility study of the existing building. Um, and as mentioned, they'll look at a few different elements. So the structure as it presently stands, the structure if you were to remove, um, the top floor, and just leave the bays at grade with 114, and then a full removal, um, and having to build potentially a new retaining wall or grading out the hill.
So, the middle one, it would take everything away, so when you looked at it, there's the apparatus floor, current apparatus floor, that is the top, would be the top of what is left.
Correct, and my assumption would be we'd have to build in some type of wall, um, you know, around.
Yeah, you know, or a fence, or something, but then you'd be talking about how, you would have an open space, and how you dress up and utilize that.
It would be like a courtyard.
Yeah.
Okay, and with storage underneath, which is now the bay for the ambulance and, uh, spare ambulance and spare truck?
Yeah, there's three or four apparatus.
Yeah.
So, it looks like in this proposal, it's, it's really a proposal for feasibility to tear everything down but the bottom floor.
The basement.
The basement, so I, so I have a few, so there's nothing in here which is okay to save the whole building. I don't see anything in here for that. So if that's, so if that's off the table, I'm wondering, if, if we have no interest in saving the whole building, I'm wondering, instead of spending $30,000 to decide if we can keep the garage underneath, maybe we just make the decision to tear the whole thing down, still fill in the, because then you don't need this. You just need an engineer to design maybe a wall or a fence, so, like, what, what is gonna be the, so let's say we spend, how much is it gonna cost extra to save, so it's 30,000 just to find out if we can? It could be a couple hundred thousand extra to save that area. So what, let's say that we save that garage under there, what are we gonna do with it? We have so much space at these new facilities, what's the purpose?
So, um, as I mentioned, there are some complicating factors, and so a couple, a couple elements, for example, are, um, some of the mechanical elements of the library are supported by, um, elements in the basement or bay, downstairs bay area of the fire station. And so it's, it wouldn't be, um, impossible, but it's not quite as simple as just removing the building and building a wall.
I assume it's mostly septic pumps.
Septic related, electrical related, so there, now the costs on a formal are stacking up as well. There's no good clean solution on this one. Um, and so that's the, the benefit of doing this study. I do agree, I think 30K is a little rich for it, I'd recommend, um, maybe something closer to 25. Um, but it's, it is, there is value in doing that exploratory work.
Well, and you're gonna tell us how much and what it's gonna cost us to deal with the hazardous?
Ballpark.
That exists?
Yeah, ballpark. So hazardous materials would have to be a separate study.
Or it wouldn't be?
So that's not included in the scope?
It did not, why doesn't it say that, site A?
And then.
A1D, no?
Uh, D, so the client will, will, the client will engage a hazardous material.
Okay, yeah.
And that's basically looking to see if there's asbestos.
Yeah.
Asbestos tire, asbestos in a boiler, and.
And then the second part of your question, Jeff, which is a, a great question that I think does need to be answered, is what is the plan, right? Cause we don't wanna keep anything just for the sake of keeping it, what are we gonna use it for, is there, you know, intent to use it, do you wanna lease it out for anything, that parking lot's kind of a mess? Um, I've heard some people express an interest in using it as some type of, um, you know, library annex, or some type of, um, storage of historic documents or something down the road, like an archive type of situation for the town.
Windows, I don't even know, there's no windows, right?
But, but you would want it to be like a weather tight building, like for, you know, old historic documents. Um, there'd have to be something that I think is part of the public process, coming from the community in terms of what they would wanna see with that space. In the meantime, it doesn't hurt to have the extra storage space. My concern personally always is, um, in a municipality or, or any business really, is the second you have free space, people wanna fill it with junk, and, and that's, and that's my biggest worry. Um, you know, it'll just become a dumping ground. So I think having, if that were the direction, having a plan in place would be a good thing. Even if it's something not this year, or next year, five years out, 10 years out, something you can work towards.
Are they also gonna look at, if the basement doesn't remain, what would have to be put there to keep those systems protected and in place there, and retaining for what is a big slope there? Is that gonna be part of the scope on this?
So, um, yes, and I would imagine that the recommendation is gonna be to pull them out and redo them entirely, um, on the side, or somewhere in a little utility building next to the building, instead of trying to work around them, which at that point is not worth it.
I'd probably see more expense in moving them than it would be to build a small structure to house them.
Right.
Or the same, I don't know. I just, I still want giant eyesore there.
Yeah.
When it's done, when you say courtyard, kinda scares me, I mean, I don't know, but, I mean, uh, you know, not to be callous, to my chief and my face, but I think it should just be a memory.
It's an ugly building, no offense.
You don't wanna, it's bittersweet, I know, you know, but.
And I did ask them that as well on the back of, you know, if you're giving thought to, cause I do think there is a, a good way, using a mix of different funds, um, you know, potentially CPA monies, potentially some monies that the library has set aside for the purposes of facilities and expansion and things like that, um, that it wouldn't hit the taxpayer too hard, but making that courtyard space a nice space, it would be a good amenity for the community. And then I think in terms of, if, if you were to keep the bays in the back, looking at them, and I had the conversation, um, with the engineer about what it would take to get a facade on that back end, so that it mirrors the look and feel and aesthetic of the Flint Public Library, because right now, it's just this peachy beigeish block.
Block, concrete block. Um, is there any, by this firm, looking at a way? Is there any by this firm looking at a way to possibly simultaneous to anything that happens here, kind of changing the route of the traffic that comes from Lake Street? Because right now, it's kind of like angled and it comes right to the, is there a way to?
So that, these folks are more so structural engineers, we'd have to get civil engineers on for that.
That would be part of the reuse analysis, you know? Once we decide how much of the building goes down, then we can see what is left and what purpose we will put to it. And that, you know, if we want to make any adjustments to how the traffic flows and adding a sidewalk, that's part of that stuff.
So I will say that the building next door, the Affordable Housing Trust has been talking about that as a site as being identified as potential reuse for something different than it is now, which is basically long time vacant space. And some of the challenges there are both parking and probably space for septic. So that's why I was asking about any possibility on the road, kind of redesign simultaneously to maybe make it more attractive and utilize the ability for that property to actually become performing property and actually provide some affordable housing options.
And I think if the board's interested in pursuing that, I'm willing to put my weight behind it and push for it. And it is worth mentioning that Mast Dot's going to have to be a partner in that conversation, which is.
Because it's an intersection to their part of the road that they own.
But that's not insurmountable and we've had some good progress, spotty in their execution, but some good progress with Mast Dot, so I think we can keep pushing there.
I mean, at a minimum, if the Angelica property goes forward, those lights are going to be changed. The intersections aren't going to be changed, but the lights are going to be changed, so, I mean, there's a little bit of a domino effect here that we may be able to have some type of positive effect maybe on that intersection.
So I'll move to authorize the town administrator to negotiate with Socotec about up to twenty five thousand dollars for the scope of services that is outlined in our packet.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Mr. Patakas and a second by Debbie.
Can I ask a question?
Further discussion, hold on one second. For further discussion on that, is there a funding mechanism in place or were we going to have to wait to a fall town meeting to actually appropriate for this?
So there is, so the warrant article to dispose of town properties, I think this would fit under that. Also, if the library is interested in taking on that space, it may be appropriate task if they have interest in kicking some in towards that as well.
Okay.
Put your other hat on, but you know.
I think the library funds would be more appropriately used for the redesign phase or the construction of a space that benefits the library rather than a study that is focused on taking a non-library building down.
I agree.
Jeff? I just, before you put, is there any way to get like an itemized, like this is just this lump sum in a dollar amount, is there any way to get a more detailed with, like, this is going to cost this, this is going to cost, like, usually we see proposals like this, it's a better, more of a breakdown than just, we're going to do this stuff lump sum.
Yeah, I can ask them to provide something.
They're listing more terms and exclusions than they are what they're going to do.
I don't know if there's any way we can postpone, we've already had a motion and second.
I'd be comfortable, I mean, we have a motion and a second, I'd be comfortable to leave that in the hands of the town administrator, I mean, I think the board's given you direction on what they'd like to see. Obviously, part of that is not to an exceed amount, you're going to have to go negotiate with Socotec, if they're not willing to negotiate, then it's been great working with you, Socotec will go negotiate with somebody else. But secondly, I think, you know, you're hearing from the board, like to see a little bit more of what the scope of service is detailed, I mean, some of this may be conversations you've already had with them, but that would probably be a helpful process. What I don't want to do is lose momentum that's happening now, because very shortly, as we get deeper into the calendar year and into the next fiscal year, you and everybody else are going to be, as well as you, as you're exiting this building, we're going to be focused on the behemoth process of moving everybody from point A to point B, standing up a new building and then mothballing this building long before we're making a decision on what's going to happen here.
And for what it's worth, I won't enter into an agreement unless they give me an itemized breakdown that I feel would be your standard.
I'd like to see.
What type of surface are you talking about when you talk courtyard?
I mean, so they're going to have to put down some type of barrier.
It's going to have to be a waterproof barrier.
You've got to pull up what's there or go over it because it's.
They would go over it, they'd probably use the existing drains.
There's going to have to be a perimeter drain around there and then there's going to be a, this is going to look no different than a parking garage in terms of.
Is it going to be something that people can be on if that contains things that aren't?
Well, I'm sure his fire trucks aren't light, so.
No, I'm saying, is there going to be, once we open it up, we do something, is it all of a sudden going to be like?
Well, that's.
That's your way where you're limited as to what you can do on it.
What this study is, is they're going to be exploring viability of the existing structure.
Thank you. I guess that goes in hand in hand with more detail, thanks.
Yep.
Okay. And will they give us some level of like? Maybe not back of the envelope, but a little bit more of like, this is what it'll possibly cost you to do this, do that.
That's what we really need.
Cost estimation, yeah.
Well, yeah, it does say, you know, include a cost estimate for the superstructure demolition.
I'll have them break down what that specifically.
Reinforcement of the slab, waterproofing, obviously, there'll have to be some landscaping that's done around there, I mean, some of that could be done by our Department of Public Works as well, but.
So none of that is in here now?
Well, that's item E on existing building. Preliminary report, cost estimates for demolition, utilities, reinforcement of slab, waterproofing, include costs for hazardous materials provided by the client's consultant.
And it's, once more of this data is compiled and it seems, if it seems that's the direction the community wants to go into, you know, we're not going to throw lipstick on a pig on this thing, but also, I don't think, I don't think a ton of money has to be dropped on this, I think there's a way to do this in a cost effective manner, that it'd still be a long term asset for the community.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I want to say again, I don't, I don't want the town to be a land load, I have no interest in the town being land loaded, managing somebody that's renting out a building, then we, you know, there's some responsibility to the maintenance and upkeep of the building. There's not going to be a lot of appetite in this town asking for us to, for dollars to renovate a building that we've just exited. And, I mean, you're in that building, I was going to say almost full time, but pretty damn close to twenty four seven, chief. And there's a lot of deferred maintenance that hasn't been done there for a whole slew of reasons, some of it's been budgetary, secondly, once we knew we were building a new building, we said, what do we have to do and nothing more. So I don't, I think, I think if we came back and decided we wanted to repair and update the building, we probably would not be looking at a number too much different than honestly taking the superstructure down.
I agree.
Okay, so there has been a motion and a second with some direction of what we want the town administrator to focus on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed if any? Okay, that passes. So, chief, anything else that you have?
No, I think so.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Good night, everybody.
You too, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, we're going to move back to number three on the agenda, so we have before us warrant number two, five, two, three, both payroll and bills payable, as well as facilities project warrant number sixty one. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so you have a two sided warrant before you this evening, so.
I'm sorry, you are correct, because we did miss a week, as well as warrant two, five, two, four and facilities project sixty two.
Thank you, so warrant two, five, two, three dated May thirteenth, twenty twenty five for payroll coming in at about eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. You'll see some of the higher overtimes, overtime figures still rolling through, about nineteen thousand dollars for the fire department, close to four thousand dollars for police, we hope to see those pulled back a little bit, once we get some of those new hires on. For bills payable, coming in at four point eight million, roughly a very large number, mostly driven by the fact that the two point seven million dollar Masco assessment on the treasurer line pops up there. For the facilities project number sixty one, a little bit lighter for this phase, two hundred twenty four thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Turning the page, once again, two cycles, just because of the way town meeting fell. Warrant two, five, two, four dated May twenty ninth, twenty twenty five for payroll coming in at nine hundred thirty five thousand, once again, about twenty five thousand in overtime. For fire, about seventy four hundred dollars in overtime for police, for bills payable, a little over a million dollars. You'll see about forty six thousand dollars in well monitoring under the PPW, that's something that's going to be coming up in a future meeting, just looking at PFAS and other issues, as well as about six thousand dollars in catch base and cleaning, continuing the five thousand in catch base and cleaning from the previous cycle.
Is the Boston Street sidewalk project now closed out, paid out?
I was actually surprised to see that pop up, someone will be following up for that sixteen, and I'll get you an answer, I thought it was done, so if it's not that one, it shouldn't be done. Facilities project sixty two, this is a big one, coming at three million, seven hundred thirty seven thousand, four hundred seventeen dollars, a bulk of that, if not all being construction, and they're moving along swiftly up the road, we're at about the six, seven month mark or so, right on track for completion. And our under budget figure has been updated from three point five million to four million and we're still pushing to get it down, so our goal is to only have to borrow about half of what we got at the special town meeting.
How close are we to expending what has been bonded and having to move into bands?
From a cash flow perspective, we have a little bit of time, we're about halfway through, so I'd say a conversation for this fall.
We did catch base at town lots, you may just find that that's, you know what I mean, it's the sidewalk measure shouldn't be.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion for warrant two, five, two, three and facilities project sixty one and two, five, two, four and facilities project sixty two.
All moved.
Okay, there's.
Second.
And there is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed if any? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, in your package, you have minutes from open session of May sixteenth, uh, May sixth, as well as the short meeting on May thirteenth that occurred prior to the beginning of town meeting. Any questions on those minutes?
Move to accept.
Okay, there's a motion to accept, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second by Jeff, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed if any? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Saltback, your town administrator, report an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, once again, my apologies for the technical difficulties, I'm more of a paper guy, if you haven't noticed, over the past two years, so I'm glad we sorted that out. I was sorry to see that I missed the most important part of the year, which is the reorging, very exciting to see, congratulations, Mr. Crest, for the chairmanship and heartfelt thank you to former Chair Cassiodas, I appreciate over the past year, we've tackled some contentious, contentious issues as a community and the effort you put in to walk the line on those and make sure everyone had a voice was appreciated, so thank you. A couple updates throughout town, a big thank you to our town clerk's office, as well as all the poll workers for an extraordinarily well run town election, it's a very busy process, it's a hive of activity, I try to make a point of poking my head in there, but I don't hang around too long, because people try to talk to me and get my opinions on things and I don't care to offer them. But they do a lot of, a lot of good, important work down there, so thank you to them. Also, a big thank you to all the candidates that run, it's a huge undertaking to put yourself out there, I think it takes a lot of courage, and so I congratulate everybody that ran and of course, congratulations to those that were elected as well. Memorial Day was well attended this year, thank you to our VSO, Nathan Stedman, for all the work that he puts into that, as well as the Patriotic Observances Committee and all the volunteers that helped make those days so special in Middleton. I had a meeting with DCA Architects last week to discuss next steps for the Flint Public Library, we had talked about the conditions assessment and what's going to come out of that document in terms of putting a plan together that we can plug into the capital plan. I asked them just to hold tight for a second, I want to get a new library director in and I want to get the maintenance person in before we start that conversation. I anticipate it to occur around September, which should line up getting us some good figures to plug into the capital plan for March. We're having conversations with department heads about new building hours for when we move into the new building, it shouldn't be that complicated, but we are trying to meld together the existence of Memorial Hall with the existence of about three quarters of one ninety five North Main that presently don't have the same hours, and so it will be a little bit of a change for some people, we're trying to meet in the middle.
Does this need to be negotiated with some of these units?
Potentially, so we're ironing out those details, we're trying to get a proposal together, we'll bring it over to the board to get your input as well sometime over the summer, I don't want to wait until it's time to move to figure that out, so.
Are the hours during the week or start and finish daily?
Uh.
Probably more involved in that.
The issue is probably the Thursday night and Friday difference.
Yes, yeah, so, and there's enough difference there that I think for people to have, you know, childcare considerations or other things, you know, they have a, you all know how it is, you have your routine and you don't want your routine to get shook up, so we're trying to find some way to make it work for everybody, so we'll keep you posted. As the building project enters its final six plus months, it's occurred to me, anytime I make a social media post about that building and I type out the new town hall slash council on aging slash community center, it's cumbersome, but also we get a lot of feedback from people saying, what's this thing's name going to be? And so I leave that to the board, to, not right now, I don't need an answer, but think about a process, what you all feel would be an appropriate way for this community to come to a consensus about what those buildings should be named or referred to. And we should probably try to figure that out sooner rather than later as we're wrapping up buying out signage and other things for the buildings.
You know, you can name each building, you can also name the complex, so it could be X, Y, Z building at A, B, C complex.
Yeah, yeah.
I also don't want to make it overly complex either.
I think just the complex, name the complex, I think.
No, I think you have to have Middleton in there.
Yeah, give it some thought or even if you dedicate it to someone, if that, I mean, if there's an appetite for that, I don't know, I don't, I don't have any suggestions, so, but not for.
When would you like to see this board have some decision made on this?
Next meeting, June twenty fourth, because we're going into the summer schedule.
So you would like us to have a discussion at the next meeting or would you like us to, at the close of that meeting, have come to a agreement of what we think this project should be known as?
I would say a discussion and then a determination by your July meeting, you know, later.
Okay. So what I'd ask is board members to start thinking about this, I do not want to see deliberations outside of the board, however, I'd say bring your thoughts and ideas to the next meeting. You know, and that may include what Costa stated, is each building named something different or is it just a complex or any combination thereof?
Look at some of what other towns may have done and.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Will we continue our efforts to dispose of surplus properties, we had actually slated this evening to talk about Locust Street, I pushed it for a couple reasons, one of them is I try to do a little more lead time in noticing the public to give them an opportunity to come out and I feel like I didn't have enough time to give to them. We're also playing a little catch up post-town meeting, but thirdly, the two left on the list are Locust Street and Memorial Hall, and I know that there's potential for a little play between those two, Jeff has talked about certain scenarios and so, I guess I kind of wanted some feedback and direction from the board, you think we should do those together?
I think there's going to be a lot of input around Memorial Hall, it's a very visible building, it's probably the building in town that most folks are engaging with on a daily basis. And, you know, Locust Street is right now vacant land. So I don't disagree that there's a possibility that these might be tied together in a future discussion, but I think, I think we've, on Memorial Hall, we've had some consultants that have come in and given us through a grant that we received from Mass Office of Business Development around, you know, potential options there. I think this board needs to get to, with some public input at the next meeting of whittling that down, you know, and some of the options that are before us are big options, like really big options, that if there's going to be a housing concept there, I would recommend the Affordable Housing Trust be a part of any future discussions to see if there's things that can be leveraged there. If there's any potential partnership, we need to think about what lip opportunities and other opportunities are there in terms of tax increment financing and other items like that, so. So I'd recommend that we do Memorial Hall next, but understanding, to your point, Jeff, that we may actually be talking about something jointly for the two of them, I think we just need to get Memorial Hall whittled down.
Hmm, okay. So we'll put Memorial Hall on for the twenty-fourth, and then we'll put Locust Street and Memorial Hall for July, maybe?
Yeah, I think a second about at the apple.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we going to put School Street on a discussion?
After those two are wrapped up?
Yeah, we could probably do that in the fall.
Okay.
Okay. Is our, last thing, if we do hold a fall town meeting, is there a plan to have anything at the fall town meeting about any of these properties that we've, I mean, we've already gotten permission for the disposition of the police station, but are we going to be doing anything at the fall town meeting in terms of mothballing costs, or planning for, you know, we may by the fall, if we have a town meeting, have a plan for the fire station, for example?
Yeah.
Or a plan for the Old Town Hall?
So I would like to keep us moving, and I'd rather not wait until next May, and so I think if there's a window of opportunity for us to push some of those forward, I'd like to do it. Memorial Hall, I'm curious to see how that conversation goes at the next meeting, and I think that's going to kind of dictate if we're, if we're on a six-month to a year track, or a mothball it, and this is going to take us two to three years type of track.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's get to that meeting first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We continue our work on PFAS monitoring for residences adjacent to town landfills. We're going to be coming in, Mr. Goodwin and I, and potentially Tracy Mello from the Board of Health at an upcoming meeting, sooner rather than later. We've had some back-and-forth conversations with Mass DEP, just trying to figure out the scope of any testing that we're doing and any potential future remediation, and in turn, what that might potentially cost. We have a secondary round of well testing that's going to occur sometime in the next month or so, which should give us good direction, and once we have that, we'll bring it forward and, you know, have a wider conversation on what that looks like.
So we're not the only town that's dealing with PFAS issues? What is the states, if at all, doing to support cities and towns around this?
They are giving us a lot of direction about what we need to do, but not a lot of financial support to do it. So we have had some conversations with members of our State House delegation who are supportive in helping us find access to some funds that presently exist. The Mass Clean Water Trust is, I think, is a good example. We may find that we're limited in terms of access to some of those pots of money, depending on where things go.
Because of MBG is...
With MBG communities. So, but that's an element that, that we're exploring, and I think once we have a good idea about what the cost is going to be, you know, if this is going to be a million-dollar problem or a ten-million-dollar problem, but we just don't have enough data yet to give a good answer.
Are there any towns that are dealing with this that are a little further ahead than we are, that we have some, like Canary and the Coal Mine, understanding in terms of how they're addressing?
So that's been part of the challenge of this, is, so the reason we're going through this process right now is because they changed the threshold for what is an acceptable exceedance, and so we're all in the same boat, on the same timeline, unfortunately.
Yeah, who changed the guidelines, was it the state or federal?
DEP, state, so, which is, which is tough, and I've expressed to Mass DEP in several meetings that I genuinely appreciate the work they're doing, ensuring that residents have access to clean water, that any, you know, potential for some type of containment in our water system be identified and rooted out, but we need some type of support here, and it wasn't the town or necessarily individual residents that put those PFAS into the soil, and why aren't the people that did, you know, why aren't they being held accountable in some capacity?
So, again, we're looking at the areas around the Old Town, where the transfer station is, also around the old Rubchuk landfill, which was a private landfill. The water looping that happened on River Street obviously didn't go down the side roads, but comes to the top of those side roads.
Yeah.
So a possible remediation of this, if it ends up being a, an issue, is bringing public water down those roads.
Yep, pulling pipe, which I think the difficult part is those neighborhoods are almost ninety-five percent ledge, and so it's not as easy as a typical water pipe job. So, but we need more data, but, you know, it could go in a hundred different ways, and...
Yeah, understood.
So we'll see how it goes. I met with members of the Council on Aging today to discuss early steps about forming a Friends of the Food Pantry Group. This is something that the board had brought up maybe about a year ago now. They're about, a rather large balance they've accumulated and very much appreciated donations, but it's very big and unwieldy for the Council on Aging to manage, where we're going to be standing up a new food pantry at the new building, at the municipal complex. We felt like it was an appropriate time to have that conversation, to try to have it finalized sometime in the fall, so that when they do make that move, there's a whole separate entity, you know, lease, lease the pantry space out for a dollar for thirty years type of deal, so.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
The funds from when Blue Haven went in, we still have those funds to be, and what is, what is the plan for those funds?
I do not know offhand, but I'll have to get back to you.
It was my understanding that at least some of it was going to be focused on some of the equipment, furnishings, and so forth, that'll be going into that facility.
So that, that may be factored into the budget already, I just don't know offhand.
Quite a live sum.
Yeah.
Two-hundred-and-fifty grand, but I thought it was even more specific to the community center, senior community center.
Yeah, senior, that's what it was specifically designated for. Yeah, senior community center.
I'll confirm an email. Okay. And I've been meeting, so with the passage of, of annual town meeting, that means we roll into evaluation season, so I've been meeting with every department head and going through their annual evaluations, providing a lot of good feedback, but also soliciting feedback from them about ways I can be a more productive manager, and I always welcome that. And I've also started work on my own self-evaluation for this board that I'll provide to you sometime, probably in July, you can discuss it in August, looking at that kind of timeline. We welcome the addition of Anjella Anderson as the Assistant Council on Aging Director. Anjella, obviously...
Fabulous appointment.
Yeah, presently works at the Flint Public Library. Every once in a while, when you're trying to fill a vacancy, you get absolutely gifted a candidate, and this is one of those situations, so we're very excited to keep Anjella in town, and I think she'll be a great fit as the assistant over there. And that is everything for now. Thank you.
That's a lot.
Yep.
Okay, any other further questions on that?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
Number four, just to recap on the May thirteenth annual town meeting, you know, one of the questions I have is, are we able to submit the Home Rule petition to our legislative delegation, or do we have to wait for the AG's office to sign off on...
I think the AG's office has a...
Charter, proposed charter changes.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll confirm with Eileen.
Those don't take effect until approved, right?
By the legislature.
So when do we anticipate that'll, they'll be official?
I couldn't offer a date. They've been moving a little slow in terms of reviewing our items. Even our ADU thing is still up in the air from the special, so that they've been running on a really slow timeline.
A question on the ADU, because the AG's office hasn't finalized our activity from the special town meeting. It's still, is it still in effect, or is it not in effect?
It's in effect.
It's in effect, but it could be pulled back by the...
Yeah, we, we might find out that we have to tweak some elements of it.
Yeah, okay.
I actually just signed my first permit in North Reading for an ADU.
Milestone.
Dark shit.
Any other items on the town meeting recap?
I mean, in general, we made a social media post about it, but, but also as well, a huge thank you to the residents of Middleton for showing up and supporting our police and fire departments. As Chief Lacoste touched on, and Chief Sampson will tell you the same, we had those postings out the door the next day, because we needed to get people in, and I think we, with full understanding that the economy is in a weird spot right now, and a lot of people are feeling squeezed, I think it makes it that much more meaningful that the people in Middleton showed up and supported that, so thank you. Beyond that, just doing our annual, annual review of existing capital items, trying to close those out, and then making accounts for all the capital items that were approved. At this most recent annual town meeting, there's, the natural flow and cycle of the year basically is going from just before the holidays, budget, 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 right up until annual town meeting, getting that funding, and then it's execute, exu, execute, right up until the holidays, repeat. So we're, we're in the execute phase right now and have a very busy summer ahead of us, so once again, thank you to the people in Middleton for, for showing up, and our sleeves are rolled up, and we have a lot of work to do, so.
Okay, any other comments or questions on town meeting wrap-up? Okay, back on agenda, item number six. We have a request for a one-day liquor license from Celador for June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five that would happen at the parking lot of the Natural Dog, which is located at one eighty-nine South Main Street. For those at home, that is affectionately known as Maggie's Farms Parking Lot. The Natural Dog is located there, and they're looking to do a, a customer appreciation day on the twenty-eighth.
They did that last year.
Yes, they did do. I, it was a different vendor that they had there, so, and I was trying to remember, when I was looking at this in the item, I believe the same requirements seemed to be in place that were put in place the last time that this happened, and if I am correct, they've, they had the conversation with the police department to ensure that they are comfortable with the way that this parking lot is going to be roped off in terms of safety of patrons that are coming in and out of the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have, I had asked you before, do we have, I don't see any authorization from the owner of the parking lot in this application.
So in following up on Mr. Garber's request, I did reach out to the requestee of the one-day liquor license that passed on, or requested, rather, whether or not they'd be able to get some type of letter of authorization from the property owner. He called me about an hour before the meeting, saying he wasn't able to get that together, and he would actually like to postpone this item to your June twenty-fourth meeting, which would still give him four days to get his thing together, so.
Okay, given that, we will table this item until the June twenty-fourth Select Board Meeting. Hopefully by then, he'll have confirmation and written confirmation from the landlord that they are okay with that property to be used as such, especially with the timeline, the, the time and hours of operation. Okay, number seven is a discussion around elementary liaison selection. Given that we have just finished the budget cycle, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth around the elementary school budget, I had mentioned, Justin, before you had returned back into the room after the reorg, part of what I envisioned going into, and this is really strange to say this, because the fiscal year hasn't even started, but we're already, I think, starting to have some conversations about FY twenty-seven, and I know number eight on the agenda is to talk about that, but given the elementary liaison selection, part of what I want to see is a little bit of a change in the budget process, specifically as it relates to the elementary schools, and given that, I think the best step to starting that process is having a liaison from this board that works directly with the elementary school administration and the elementary school committee. So I, I'd open it up for board members on their thought on this. I think we need to be clear with the elementary school committee what our expectations are as the liaison. This is not a sixth member of the school committee. It's really no different than the finance committee liaison that is to the elementary schools, as well as the finance committee liaison to the Masco School Committee and the Masco School Administration. However, I think this will also hopefully provide a better process of communication between the two boards. And I would, you know, welcome the liaison from this committee, you know, to occasionally attend their meetings, just like I would recommend. They may want to have a liaison from their school committee to this board. So any thoughts from board members on this? And when I talk about thoughts, I mean, is there, is there anybody that would be willing to do so?
I would recommend Costa.
Was that a...
Thank you, Debbie.
Was that a motion, Debbie, or was that a recommendation?
That is, that is a motion.
Okay, we have a motion of Costa Patakas as the elementary liaison. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but is there any, him being a Masco school, Costa, you think there's any conflict because you're a Masco school committee?
I'm not on the Masco school committee.
Oh, that's right. I was thinking, that's right. I forgot that you weren't anymore. Okay, then yes, I strongly second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, if any? Well, that sounded unanimous to me. So Costa, thank you for doing so, and I would ask you, when you engage with the school committee, welcome them to do the same if they would like to bring a liaison to this committee. I think a change in communication structure, but really, an early discussion on budgetary guidance and process would be well-appreciated, which was my segue into agenda number eight, which is FY twenty-seven budgetary guidance.
Well, I, I think the guidance for everyone should be, you know, your budget increase can only be up to two and a half percent. You know, given the changes that are happening at the federal level and how they may flow, the flow of money going to the state level or to directly to elements of, like the schools, we can't have any comfort in being, saying anything else, because we know that we get growth on top of the two and a half, but there's no way that, you know, health and dental, insurance is going to increase only two and a half percent.
No, I, I think to the point of health, and to a lesser extent dental envision on health, the number we ended up seeing this year, remind me again?
Seventeen, nine, eight, two, or something like that.
Let's call it eighteen percent. I am telling us to gird ourselves for something similar or worse next year. If you want an indicator of this, United Health Group, United Healthcare, the largest health insurer on the planet, a Fortune Four company, has canceled all quarterly fiscal guidance that they're giving to their, to their investors, because they cannot get a handle on what is continuing to be significantly large growth in clinical spend within their insurance. You're seeing this in Massachusetts, Point Thirty-two Health is, I'd be lying if I didn't say they're on the verge of being knocked to their knees, and their plan Harvard Pilgrim, which is a very large plan in municipalities right now and state government, we're seeing rate increases of north of twenty to twenty-four percent last year, so I think we have to gird ourselves for that. Part of that guidance of two and a half, are we saying two and a half including, or two and a half?
Total.
Okay. So, you know, I think this is a message we have to continue to preach, and there are going to be some difficult budget issues that certain departments and organizations in the town are going to have, but we're going to have to take this a case-by-case basis. Secondly, as we talk about health insurance, I'd say, Justin, to you and Jackie, as well as the HR Director, we need to have a very clear plan going into the FY twenty-seven budget of what we are interested in for our health insurance makeup. We need to look at any and all processes. That also includes potentially having to negotiate with our bargaining units, and they may very well be willing to negotiate, because they just got hit with an eighteen percent increase in their, in their rates. I will tell you, we've done, I think, a very good job in changing the percentage mix on that, however, if we continue to see high double-digit increases in our health insurance, it's going to be very difficult for us to continue to manage. So I don't know if that's looking at GIC, if that's looking at going into the market on our own, truly looking at bringing in alternatives in addition to the plans we have now, FSAs, high deductible plans, which seem to be more attractive to younger employees, our health employee, our... younger employees, our health employee, our employee mix continues to get younger and younger. So I think we have a runway of 12, 11 months, maybe 10 months to really start looking at this very clearly. And that's not to actually free up to get us into a better position above two and a half percent. I think that's to allow us to stay within the two and a half percent.
So I have a question. Like the, the schools, when they, the health insurance is part of their budget. The other town departments, like the library or the DPW, is that part of their individual budgets, the health insurance for their employees, or is that not included in what they submit for their budget?
So to my recollection, they have a salary line, but I believe we just hold one bulk number for health insurance.
That's an unclassified, is, you know, the, you know, sort of health insurance, town share of health insurance for all the town employees is in the unclassified budget.
Mm-hmm.
And that budget is going to, you know, there's no way it's going to be.
And that includes the teachers? No, it doesn't?
No. So on the elementary school basis, their budget actually holds a line item on health insurance, vision and dental. I'd also state, there's more employees in the elementary school than there probably are elsewhere, combined in the community, on the municipal side. I think, you know, this is where you get your work cut out ahead of you as the elementary liaison. I mean, when we say two and a half percent, that's why I asked the question. Now, the budget, but, but the budget process, we just finished with the elementary. We basically said, we're going to hold you harm, not hold you harmless, but the number that we held them at, we were kind of carving out the health insurance because this was an astronomical year. We are all on clear footing. I want the elementary school, and if you're watching this meeting, I want you to hear very clearly, you need to plan for significantly large increases in your health insurance. There, I've said it. Let's make sure it's in the meeting minutes. That same guidance is going to be given to all of our department heads, whether it's a line item in their budget or it sits in the unclassified piece that Jackie, Justin and Sarah manage. It's still, this is left pocket, right pocket.
So when they, when they, is it figured into their, so if you had a town department, when they come in for what they want next year, is that even a consideration? Do they even, so it's a little different because that?
A parallel I can draw, Jeff, because I get the point you're trying to make. It would be like if you're asking like the English and the math departments to hold their, their health insurance separately. It just, it doesn't.
It's not helpful.
Right. But I'm saying like if you have a department, like the, the DPW will say, for instance, when the DPW director comes in and for his two and a half percent increase, is, is there any relevance to health insurance in that number for him?
No, because the health insurance.
Is that carved out that that's part of his?
It's a separate part.
So it's in his budget?
No, no, it's in, it's on the unclassified portion of our budget.
So we, so we may find, and if you're looking at like the ratio of the budget, that if, if health insurance continues to balloon, then we may have to give internal guidance that, hey, you guys can't increase your individual department budget by two percent, yeah, to make up for the fact that that is growing.
Right, because they don't see that.
Correct.
Like the school, the school committee sees that. They, they, if you had a, you know, the building department or any department, that department head trying to make a budget and stay within the two and a half, he doesn't have that number. You know what I'm trying to ask, right, Costa?
Yes, yeah. But, you know, that's why I phrased it up to two and a half percent. So the DPW director can't, oh, two and a half, I'm going to raise my budget two and a half percent. No, it's up to two and a half. So, you know, if, you know, you know, a lot of it, you know, is, you know, salary. So if, you know, the union contracts, you know, go up 2.25%, and then everything, oftentimes we keep everything else the same, well, his overall budget is going to be, go up 2.1%, me, something. So I, I see the point what you're making, but at this point, there's a lot of uncertainty about what FY27 will look like. So we're just saying, people look at the two and a half, up to two and a half percent.
I'm saying historically, have they even looked at the health insurance part of it because it's in the?
So I would say, I would say it may not be part of what, I don't know why I'm picking on Paul, but when Paul's putting his DPW budget together, and I'm not picking on you, Paul, but it's not part of his budget, but it's surely part of the guidance that Sarah, Justin are providing to him of, hey, we're also dealing with a significant increase over here. Secondarily, I think the difference is, Jeff, between the elementary school budget and the rest of the municipal budget is the elementary schools have complete and total line item authority. If they have a shortage in their school lunch program, they can take it from the utilities light on them. If they have a shortage in their cost for health insurance, they can take it from their transportation line. Our other departments don't have the ability to do so. Their budgets are clearly defined. They don't have that authority. Secondly, they're the largest employee base in town. It, and there was, I remember when I was first on this board, God love Nancy Jones, she was the one that was always advocating for the cost of health insurance to be included in the school's budget because then you got to see how much of the budget was elementary, how much was Masco, and how much was municipal. And you could clearly on an apples to apples comparison. On the, on the municipal side, it's really left pocket, right pocket of how we're accounting for the cost of insurance.
So this is sort of the guidance that I'm proposing at this point. You know, in when we get, you know, towards November or December and Justin sends, you know, his, you know, letter to the department heads, he may, you know, say, you know, given what other things are happening, you can only go up two percent, right?
Yeah.
So at least we're giving everybody know at this point, okay, it may be tough next year. So you start looking. And, you know, if things change in November and December, it can either go up or it can go down.
Well.
Or may adjust per departments, you know?
I'll also add a point to this. You know, we're trying to forecast of what the economy and what the environment's going to look like going into FY27. I'll also pose this. We just asked the voters of this town to fund three lodge overrides.
Yep.
So the guidance that we gave and then the overrides were pretty, not pretty hefty, were very hefty increases. Now, not saying that they weren't worthwhile efforts. I don't have a problem with stating, now it's our time to operate within what we have. Now, we operate under a two and a half law, under proposition two and a half with new growth, but we don't have to spend a two and a half percent. And now, obviously, we don't through the fiscal guidance that we do, but, you know, part of that guidance can be, again, back to your point, Coster, is up to two and a half percent. I would say that we want to continue to look at that and maybe readdress that guidance and it may come down or it may stay exactly where it is the closer we get to the budget process, but.
Or may vary by department or section of the budget, so.
Because the other thing that, I mean, I've said this before, I mean, we have a new facility that's going to open up. We're going to have different utility costs there than we have today. We're going to have different staffing issues that are going on. We're going to have two new buildings and grounds that are being maintained. And we're not walking away from maintaining the grounds of Memorial Hall and maintaining the grounds of the Old Town Hall Police Station until that is sold and, and the rest. So, I mean, there's going to be some other budgetary items that are going to no longer be one time. These are going to be regular recurring costs that, I mean, I think we have a good handle of what they're going to look like, but it's going to look different. Our budget in FY27 going into.
Is going to be different.
Most of, not all, but some of FY26, our budget's going to look different, just on utilities and maintenance and upkeep. I mean, I'm, I walked that parking lot and I looked at that, that's going to be a nightmare to plow. I mean, honestly, there's probably going to be one DPW worker that's going to be assigned to that full-time and entire snowstorm. That's going to be off the road, plowing roads or sidewalks or parking lots elsewhere. It doesn't mean we're not plowing the Memorial Hall parking lot. We're still plowing that. We're still plowing the Old Town Hall. We're still plowing the police station. We're not going to leave that place unplowed. So, again, budgetary guidance, I'm not, I'm not firing a warning at all, but I'm okay if we really ratchet down our belts going into FY27.
Speaking, speaking of that, what's the status of you, of hiring a, a maintenance person for that?
So that was another one that we got out the door the next day, and we've had applications flowing in at a pretty steady stream. I've seen about 10.
Now, would you ever maybe ask that person to help out with the snow removal?
That's the expectation.
Yeah, they would get in a truck and, okay.
Yep. Are they going to be union?
No, non, non-union.
They're not going to get in a DPW truck?
Really?
Well, even Paul.
We'll hash that out.
Even Paul, you know, you know, before he gets in the, and plows, he needs to make.
I get a blessing, but I feel like I've seen Paul and Travis do lots before.
I've seen Paul do the ride a moa within the last two weeks at, at the library.
I saw one of my favorite former fire chiefs in a snowstorm out in a front end load of clearing roadways, so.
So anything paperwork wise we have to do to make that okay, we'll, we'll get into that. But I think also if they're exclusively staying, not doing the roads, but staying on the municipal.
Well, but they're going to be clearing the sidewalks. They're going to be, I mean, the public's going to be coming. There's all kinds of items are going to be happening there. I mean, and you've heard me say at some point, we need to talk about how we're going to manage the maintenance of those facilities and is this a staffing or an outsourced effort? And, and I think we should also talk about the outside maintenance of that facility, staffing or insourced.
Yep.
Because we have gotten our fields into really good shape. I give the DPW staff huge credit for where our fields are now compared to six, seven years ago. And that was not lost on me that that took a lot of work to get us there. I don't want to see like two steps forward and three steps back because we have a lot of green space to maintain.
A lot of lawn there, that's for sure.
And it's going to look beautiful.
Yeah.
As it should. Okay, so what I'm hearing now is Costa's talking about an up to two and a half percent. I think if it's helpful, I would recommend that be in the form of a motion.
So moved. A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Costa and a second from Rick. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, if any? Okay, that is unanimous.
And for clarification for minutes, up to two and a half percent with health insurance within that two and a half percent. Yes. Part of that two and a half percent.
Yeah, if your budget includes, you know, health insurance.
Yep, yep.
Now, that might be difficult for the health insurance line item to stay at two and a half percent, but.
We're projecting 20%.
That's the number I would carry right now.
And so.
You might have to actually reduce the total by two and a half percent.
That's exactly correct.
Or, you know, I mean, depends on, you know, how much growth.
Yeah.
What's the growth number?
Um, so that's light.
Yeah, so.
Don't.
Permits have been slow.
Yep.
So that's, yeah, that's why I phrase it up to two and a half percent. So, because as we get closer to it, we may, you know, say.
You may wind up with just a number.
We'll do our best.
Okay. Well, there'll be no surprises. Not that there were surprises on our side in our municipal budget creation this time, but, you know, let's say it early and often. Okay, item number nine. Folks at home, and the public may not know, but our Flint Public Library Director, you had mentioned in your report, is going to be departing the Flint Library. She is moving on to a new role. We wish Loretta all the best. I believe she will be departing July 1st. Am I correct?
Yes.
July 1st. So as part of that, and as you know, he had mentioned in his summary earlier, the process had started for the selection of a new assistant library director due to a departure there. I believe that process is kind of like held in a stasis right now as we are now focusing on the recruitment and hiring of a new library director. So in the past, and folks add some commentary here if I'm off, in the past, the process has been that this board has provided two members to serve on a committee. The Library Board of Trustees have provided two members. And then I believe in the past, there has been two members of the public and a member from the Friends of the Flint that have served on a selection committee. The last time when Loretta was, I believe Costa and I were the representatives from the Select Board. And I can't remember who the trustees were. I know Annie Wilton was from the library, from the Friends of the Flint, and I can't remember the two members of the.
George, uh.
Coming? No, George was from the Library Trustees.
Yeah.
Melissa Stankis from the Library Trustees, Annie from the Friends of the Flint, and I think Shirley Reynard served as a member of the public.
Yeah, I think Ann Cody was.
Yes, Shirley and Ann were the members of the public that served. So as such, this board needs to designate two individuals from this committee. Who's designating the members of the public? I was trying to remember this in the ride-in today while I was sitting in the traffic in 114, and I don't think it was this committee that actually put the members of the, the greater public on it. I think it might have come from the Library Trustees.
Was it spoilt by any chance? Would it be weird to spoil it?
And this committee won't bring one finalist. They'll narrow it down to like last time?
So in the past, the committee interviewed, when I served on it, I wasn't on it when, when Melissa was hired. Melissa Gaspar, you were. But when Loretta was selected, there were, I think, four candidates that were interviewed. And then that committee brought it back to one. And then there was a joint meeting with this board in the Library Trustees.
No, we interviewed two, in the joint meeting, there were two. There was a gentleman and Loretta, and we, we had a vote.
Yep. There was two, I thought. I thought the selection committee only selected one.
No, there were two.
There were two.
Okay. So I'd like to see that again, I think.
Yep, there were two.
There were? Do you remember that, Costa? I, I remember there were, I remember two or three or four candidates, but I, I thought it was just Loretta that.
Yeah, I didn't know how many they had to get there, and I'm not familiar with the composition of, are we happy that there's enough people, you know, on, on a committee to do the interviews?
If, if there are seven people, that's.
That's good.
That's why it was the last selection committee, and the selection committee before that was, you know, seven people.
Okay.
So what I would recommend is, I think, we want to solicit, whether it's this board or the trustees or a combination thereof, appointing, maybe it's one from this board and one from.
Do something like that?
The Library Trustees or appointing a member of the public.
If they're all right with it.
I would recommend the Friends of the Flint appoint their representatives, similar to we're going to do for our two representatives. Obviously, the Library Trustees will do that at their next meeting. I know in some of the guidance that you've given, Justin, that you are hoping that we could get this position filled by Labor Day. I would like us to be as aggressive as possible. I'd like to see this position posted forthwith as quickly as we posted the others after town meeting. I know that means there's a lot of HR activity happening. I, I get it and I appreciate that. Sorry, Jackie. However, and I also would not like to see the posting stay. It's going to be like a 35-day posting and then it'll close. I would like the posting to state that, you know, interviews and reviews will happen in a timely manner.
You want the job, put your name in.
Well, get, get cracking on this because sometimes what happens when you see a 30 or 40-day posting, people will wait, look at it, look at it, look at it, look at it, and then the last day they submit. Because I'd really like to get this process going quickly. Many of our previous library directors have come from other libraries, either as assistant or full directors. Cognizant of me, if it's a full director, he or she may have to give some timely notice where they're departing. I'd really like to get this position filled before Labor Day.
I agree 100%. The sooner the better.
I'll.
Well, you know, if you want to be, you know, expeditious, there should be, you know, post the position as soon as possible, advertise for people of, to interest, to fill the citizen at large slots, and, you know. And, you know, this board has another, you know, meeting in June, June 24th. So either meet jointly with the Library to appoint the two citizens, or just this board appoints it. So on June 24th, we have a committee appointed. And then, you know, they can start, you know, meeting, you know, the week after, you know, to reviewing the resumes that have come in to date.
Okay. There's their motion for two people from the board.
So I'd ask for a motion of individuals that would like to serve.
And I will not be participating, having done the last two, I think, offer that opportunity to someone else. And the other reason is that since I'm on both boards, if I'm a representative of one board, the other board will be a majority of that board on the committee, which creates all sorts of posting issues, so...
Can't keep ticking hats off?
Yeah, I'll volunteer.
Okay, so Rick is interested. I'd state that I'd be, I mean, if you're interested as well. Are you interested?
If you have...
No, if you're interested, I was going to be interested, but if you are, Debbie. You sure? Okay.
So I'll nominate Brian and Rick.
I'll have a second.
Okay, there is a nomination and a second for myself and Mr. Cassiodas. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, and then you'll do your magic with communicating with the trustees and let's get the position posted, let's get the interest in. And I'd say for those at home that are watching this meeting, if you're interested in serving as a member-at-large to the screening committee, I'll tell you the work involved. The last time I went through this, we had probably about a three-to-a-four hour meeting, including interviewing everybody. We did have one short meeting where we kind of talked about how we wanted to approach interviews, types of questions we wanted to ask in the process, and then we dove head first into a very long marathon session of interviewing candidates with a set process. Our HR Director will guide us through that process. It's pretty painless, it's actually a pretty interesting process to see it up close and personal. So if folks at home want to serve, just reach out to the Town Administrator's Office and let them know.
And, you know, ideally, from my perspective, is, you know, if those two citizens-at-large, you know, had, you know, backgrounds in, sort of, you know, knew a lot about the library, either because they were, you know, active users of, you know, the library and its programs, or former trustees, and also, you know, having, you know, a background in, you know, evaluating and hiring management-level people, because the Library Director, he does manage a department, and that is a skill that is separate than, you know, being a librarian.
Absolutely. And I'd also like to close this topic with, again, a big thank you to Loretta. A lot of people in town know this, but not all. She truly grew up at the library, starting as a page and an intern when she was in high school. She's literally worked just about every role in the, at the library. So I know there'll be time in the future for the town and the townspeople to recognize and thank Loretta, but I would like to add that, at least my, add my input on that, and to thank Loretta for her years of service to the Flint Library and the Town of Middleton. She's a resident of this town, so I know she's, will continue to be dedicated to our library.
I concur. Thank you, Loretta. Unfortunately, we'll have to be looking to replace her.
Okay, last on the agenda is discussion around the award for a comprehensive zoning study that I know that Anna has been working along with the Administrator's Office on the screening and selection of a consulting firm to support.
That's correct. So if you recall, back in February, we had released an RFP to state-approved vendors for the purpose of doing a comprehensive zoning study in Middleton. There was a screening committee formed for that, which I served, Debbie also served, and several others, where reviewing the candidates on paper, we brought forth an excellent candidate. When they came in for a meeting with the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, the presentation didn't really rise to the occasion. And so at the request of those two bodies, they went back and interviewed the two other consulting firms and actually found that they enjoyed the proposal and presentation from VHB more. And so the recommendation from those bodies is to move forward with this proposal from VHB. It is a large undertaking, but they certainly have the experience, their proposal is included in the packet. Overall, the cost is $100K when it comes to a comprehensive zoning plan. Money well spent. This is something that's going to be in place hopefully for a very long time, and it really has long-term impacts in terms of the shape and growth of the community. And so $100,000 is a lot of money, but it's money well spent, and hopefully you make it back from having good smart growth zoning. In terms of funds in hand, we do have $59,250 left in grant money from the One Stop Grant, and we're still eligible for those monies. And $45,000 remaining untouched in the town allocation, so we can easily cover that amount with the funds in hand.
Is there anything specifically, like are they going to look a little higher, like at North Main Street we've talked about, or is it more just looking at the whole zoning bylaw? What is the focus?
The whole map and the whole bylaw. On a separate track, we are doing a deeper dive on the North Main Corridor. That group is going to bring their findings and feed it back into the comprehensive zoning process so that it all ties together.
So that, that group will meet first, get their ideas, and give it to these people?
They'll probably be meeting at the same time, honestly.
So they're aware of all this?
The timelines will line up, yeah.
And they're aware, this company is aware that we have a committee studying?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yep. And we've carefully, and credit to Anna, planned this out so that the timetables all mesh up, and we're firing on all cylinders here, because this is something that's long overdue. And I mean, it's, it's difficult, I think a rehash of zoning is difficult in any community. Middleton, you know, is known for being a little trickier, it's a little bit more of a lift, which isn't necessarily a bad thing. You're all just a, you're a particular bunch, and you're going to scrutinize it a little bit harder. And so that was a big part of it, is making sure it was a consultant that could not only do the work, but present well and with authority, that could deliver the information clearly and transparently to the residents leading up to and at town meeting is part of hope.
So if this is approved this evening, the proposed schedule that they had, obviously, was a start date of April 1st, 2025. If this is approved this evening, when would services start?
So immediately, we'd like to get them going immediately. And the original intent of the timeline was to have it done in time for annual town meeting next year. We wanted to make sure that we gave somebody a full year to go through that process, because once again, it's not only the work of getting this together, it's the work of soliciting input from the community, it's the work of doing public...
So this was running, originally running April 1st through March 1st, 2026. Do we still think we can stay by the March 1st schedule?
That's the hope. We did build in a little extra flex time in there just in case, but it's been made clear to the vendor that that flex time isn't an option anymore.
Now zoning changes, I know there's been some changes. Is it now a majority at town meeting, or a two-thirds majority at town meeting for zoning changes?
So it's a two-thirds majority.
Two-thirds still for those?
The exception you've seen in a few different items, or was a simple majority, yeah.
I don't know if they changed at all, I would just say.
Okay. Okay, so we have a recommendation here from both the Planning Director and the Town Administrator for a selection of a consulting contract. VHB, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of a contract with VHB. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, if any? Okay, that passes unanimous. Okay, upcoming meetings, we have one in June 24th, as I mentioned, at the beginning of the meeting after the reorg. We are tentatively scheduled for July 8th and August 5th. I would ask board members, you do not have to give me an answer now, please go back, including you, Justin, and Jackie, as regular attendees and participants in this meeting. I know we are heading into vacation time of the season, please let me know if those dates still work for you.
That's fine, I built my vacations around my meetings.
That's fine with me, those three dates.
Okay, so right now, we will be meeting the 24th, July 8th, and August 5th. I will work with Justin to put a calendar together for the rest of the calendar year, just so we can talk about those. Again, as I said at the enter of this, we have professional and personal lives also, so please let me know in advance if calendar dates become problematic for you, we will be as flexible as possible. Okay.
Do we, do we need to reappoint, you know, the people authorized to sign warrants on off cycle?
I would say that could fall under reorg on this.
Okay, so right now, our authorized signers are Rick and Costa. Are Rick and Costa willing to continue to be authorized signers?
Yeah, on Tuesdays, so...
I can't read either one of your signatures, but I would like to authorize you again. So I would entertain a motion for both Rick and Costa to be authorized signatures for warrants during off Select Board meetings.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, if any? Okay, that passes unanimously. Any other items from board members? New, new information or announcements?
I do not.
Oh, the Masco School Committee, you know, is, you know, soliciting, you know, input from the community on the superintendent there. They need to address something in his contract that they've, you know, in doing that, they've asked, you know, if people will have any comments to send it to the school committee.
Do you know when the deadline is on that?
Maybe the next week or so.
Could we put that on the front page of the town website?
There was, you know, a posting, you know...
I saw some social media posts as well, yeah. Okay.
Deb had something.
Deb?
One thing that I'd like to see this board, and I meant to mention it when we were reorganizing, is sometimes during different conversations, it becomes a free-for-all on speaking, and then the ends of the table become even harder to speak over. So my recommendation, I actually planned on doing it before forfeiting the chair, but either way, I would like to see the board, no board member speaks until they have been recognized by the chair.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to probably need a bigger gavel.
Oh, I can make that happen.
No, I appreciate that, you know, you see at a town meeting...
Don't cry.
You appreciate... No, I appreciate that. Actually, you see a town meeting where, you know, the moderator asks you to speak to the chair. I'd say I will do my best to make sure that we are being recognized appropriately. I've probably been a big abuser of that in the past. Now that I have the gavel, I will do my best to ensure that folks are heard, and heard in a timely manner, and that we keep a flow to the meeting as well. Thank you for that, Deb.
Welcome.
Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, and we stand adjourned. Thank you.